This is a meeting of the planning board subcommittee working on stormwater management ordinance, and it's Tuesday, October 29th. Thank you. Can we work off of the February 2nd Jesperson document first? And we're going to be referencing the point in question.
Why not the February 2nd?
Oh yeah, it's just the most recent.
Oh, you're talking about...
We have to use it.
The point is we work with everything.
Okay. Can we dive right into 525213? Our favorite, I don't even have to translate any of it.
Did you get the printouts of all of them?
Do one for, yes, okay.
I did. And that would page in Gens. I'm working off of this, your September 15th, Paul, okay?
Yes.
And that would be...
It's the one I temporarily lost.
Page four in the plan, September 15th, and... Page four in...
And we've got several flavors to consider.
Actually, I gotta work with the version I can write then. So, you've done some drafts of this on which document here, the October 29th?
Well, I mean, the original one that, you know, obviously we've had a couple of false starts on this section, and those have been pretty much tossed. And we're sort of, I think both of these things that Jess and I were working on, you can kind of glean what the original content was based on.
Is one new and... Jess, is this, you brought this one for us?
Great.
Thank you. Thank you both for wondering why.
Well, I'm not so hot, you know? I didn't have any aha moments, except for the one blue line.
Okay.
But I did rearrange some of the sections.
Okay, well, can we just start on 213 first of all?
Yeah.
Oh, you're still both on the... Okay, we'll do that afterwards, the sequencing here, the applicability and then blah, 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 so. But let's do one, the wording in 213 initially. Let's just, if we can have a minute or...
Did you mean apply to new development?
Talking to me?
Yeah, the first sentence. Apply to...
I didn't memorize it. What are you talking about?
Well...
I'm not reading the same stuff you're reading right now.
I'm looking at yours at the moment.
Right, and so where do you...
The first sentence. I assume that the word "to" is inadvertently dropped. This ordinance shall apply to TO.
Oh, yeah, I guess so, yeah. Maybe just two?
Oh, and within as opposed to with?
Where?
Same sentence. Within the following zones, or are you truly meaning with?
Oh, within.
Either one will work, but I guess, I think it's within.
I just copied what was already written.
Okay, so within, better.
Yes, within.
Actually, I kind of like the bold statement right at the beginning, boom. Talking about the zones, trying to kind of get that out of the way.
Yeah, I would vote for the Donnell Amendment this year. I like that. It's a little cleaned up and more concise, I think, than what we landed on so far.
For all applicability, yeah.
Well, not for the whole thing, but I mean, for that part of it.
Yeah, no, I...
I think it makes sense to break it out and sort of say, okay, don't bother going on if this isn't true, essentially. Less to consider all at once.
Yeah, to have the zones first.
Right.
Well, I like having one and two next to each other. I'm not fussy about where the zones go, but I like to have all of them.
We all on board with that?
I see.
It's clearer that I, that there's, you know, let's...
I'll take little victories where we can get them.
Okay.
I mean, that seems, that seems a good move.
Thank you, Jess. Okay, moving on to 215 then?
Yeah, I didn't play with the numbers, I just...
If you're, if you're referring to acceptance of the whole applicability thing...
Yes, sir.
That would be a big... But all I was saying is that the zones breaking out separately makes good sense.
Right, everyone likes that, so what else do, what else should we...
The rest of it, I think we're still in for a catfight and blowing up heads.
I, okay, well, I see, I see no problem with the rest of it.
I know, you saw no problem last time, too.
Well, I think she's mapped it out here and nailed down the issues which were unclear.
Well, first off, on number two, your suggestion was to copy if it meets the threshold level of disturbance, and now it says whether or not it meets the threshold of disturbance. Which would be the preferred phraseology?
I'd say...
Because they have, you know, they have very different meanings. Which one is intended?
Well, I think, I think the performance standards are laid out in section 243. I like that it would apply to whether or not it's a new structure.
Okay, and basically, this is, that's just clarifying, that's just clarifying what that meant in the first place.
Right.
Yeah, what's the...
So, not really changing the meaning at all.
I don't think so.
And really, the issue was, what the heck is the meaning?
Yeah.
Well, the way it's written, you gotta read the whole thing.
The whole...
You gotta read both section 5.215 and 5.43, because you're not being eliminated from any of it. It's not a one or the other.
Right, but if you look at, you jump down to that section that they're talking, it's talking about the stormwater management for decks, you know, the 43?
Mm-hmm.
As written, it precludes, you know, basically, what is the phraseology here? Let's just jump to it. It has a big exclusion.
Well, I didn't get, yeah, I didn't change the wording.
If it's, if it's not part of the...
Yeah, it has a big exclusion.
...primary structure, it writes out right into the page 13 and 43.
Yeah, no, so regardless of how you got down here, yeah, okay, so it says, 43, stormwater management for decks, patios, retaining walls, and impervious surfaces. New or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structure, or impervious services, not part of the development of a new primary structure or a building expansion of existing primary structure within zones, blah, 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 shall meet the following requirements. So, if it is part, if these things are part of a...
Will be crossed out.
...development of a new primary structure.
It will be handled in one.
Well, I had crossed it out in my thing, but my impression was that that was one of the things that was rejected, that change, or not.
No, you were clear on that.
So, that's supposed to be crossed out?
Was everybody clear on that? That if it is part of a new construction, it would fall under the applicants working through citation one under 2.13. Is that right, Jess?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I think so, but what you're talking about, a lot of times, they put the deck on a year after they put up the primary structure.
Well, that would be under two.
Okay, all right.
But development of a new structure, including, i.e., a deck, a patio, a retaining wall, or accessory structure, would be handled under one.
Yeah, I just don't think that phrase is necessary there, but it just adds confusion.
Which phrase?
So, I prefer it crossed out. It's not part of the development of new primary structure, blah, blah, blah.
I, I have no...
I mean, I don't think it really matters what it turns out, but I think it's better without it.
I think it would be nice if there were new performance standards.
No, I didn't draft anything on that page, I didn't get that far.
Oh, I see, you're talking about 413.
Yeah.
About 43.
Well, I'm talking about 43, I'm talking about what Paul just read.
Stormwater management for decks, patios, retaining walls, and impervious surfaces.
You know, I think, I think you're correct, what I'm looking at now is the draft version two, the full document that we talked about the time before.
Only in what I've been saying.
Oh, no, October 15th. I guess what I'm trying to establish is on the 43, whether we had agreed that the thing that says not part of the development of any primary structure, blah, 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 that little phrase, whether that's crossed out.
I thought we had...
Allowing anything through here if it happens to get to this part of the document.
I like that, I'm not 100% we agreed on it, but...
Yeah, I think we were tending to...
I think we're tending to agree on it.
Yeah, I think we were tending to. Yeah, I liked it not being there, yes, I personally did.
I mean, I think it makes sense to not bypass it.
I didn't go back to compare to what...
Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't you want to use these standards for...
Because right now, if you're putting these things in...
I just think that phrase, not part of the development of a new primary structure, is extra and confusing, and it makes you think about something that you're not really supposed to be thinking of in that paragraph. In that paragraph, you're supposed to be thinking about decks, patios, retaining walls. You're not supposed to be worrying about the new primary...
Regardless of the circumstance.
Right.
I tend to think along the same lines.
Okay.
That it's, it's kind of ridiculous to bend steel bars to get into this document and then bop them out around this section under certain circumstances that are quite nebulous. You know, that like, if there are decks and retaining walls and patios, regardless of whether there's a building improvement or not, and we, when we're here, we should do this section, in my opinion.
So, the, this consensus on striking the clause under 43, not part of the development of a new primary structure or building expansion of an existing primary structure, is that? What do we...
I believe that is what's under discussion, yes, that it should be crossed out. I think there's general agreement that it doesn't make any sense to bypass this section if we happen to have gotten in this document however we got here.
We all on board with that?
So?
Okay, I think it works.
Let the record show, we have some agreements.
Okay. So, it's not part, all the way through, of an existing primary structure is proposed to be structured.
Right, so the not beginning, not part, and the ending with existing primary structure. So, it's talking about newer expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, and impervious surfaces within zones listed in A to C in section, blah, blah, shall meet the following requirements. And what that means is whether one or two applies, we will do this section if in fact we happen to have these structures.
It doesn't show standards, it doesn't give you numbers, so you don't worry about the numbers, you're going for the quality, you're going for the discretion, let you get it, so that's...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. May we go back to Jess's draft? Let's put a date in this, okay? Jess, 10/29, right, today?
Yes.
Is there consensus on the language as she's laid it out under 2.13?
Okay, so, sort of looking back at the original version of this, just to see, you know, what is in there and what is not in there, just so that, you know, it doesn't accidentally get lost or included. Development, okay, so the phrase about as permitted by the town of Acton Land Use Chart, is that largely superfluous, is just sort of pointless?
Yeah, I guess I don't know.
I mean, I could get, I could get behind that concept.
I was trying to cut and paste it, and I just didn't make it in, but...
Okay, but, but, you know, I guess, is it...
We don't need it, because we've got a chart that we can refer to, you know, I mean, I don't think we need it. It's just another clause of extra...
True. And in fact, if it's not permitted by the town of Acton Land Use Chart, you're never going to get it.
Right.
That's probably how you got here, we expect.
So, does we all in yet another phase of agreement here about blocking this clause? Fine.
Yep.
Excellent, okay, so, shall apply to all new development. Okay, so, the new development part is now up at the top. So, in your mind, when we talk about new development, does that exclude making changes to an existing...
One and two define what new development are. They, they're very clear what you're going to be developing.
Okay, so this is really referring to the next two sentences, okay, the next two...
Are we inserting in that first line, apply to all, or apply to...
I think just apply to, right?
I think we need all.
Shall apply to new development.
Okay, within the following zones, as, to all new development as described... It's getting more complicated again.
Within the following zones.
Yeah, within the following zones.
So, just to new development within the following zones, leaving the next two paragraphs more refined what is intended.
Right, to all new development, I suppose if Tom wants it. To me, development, new development and all new development are the same thing, but, you know, if you want to put all in there, it doesn't bother me at all.
Well, is it going in or not going in?
What's the consensus later, it might help.
Okay, so, right now, it does say all.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
All right. Development of a new structure, existing structure.
Okay, now...
And we need that phrase, not part of the development of a new structure, in two. I don't know if we do or not, I just cut and paste it, so...
Yeah, okay, can we look at, unless somebody wants to answer that one?
Well, yeah...
I think that's going to be a point of contention, and I think it has a very definite difference in meaning.
It refers you back to one, in my sense.
Well, it depends on whether one is going to, one is going to be executed or not. But I would like to actually walk you through some of the possibilities of what that could mean based on what one is, but...
Well, let's, let's rather than go on that tech...
Yeah.
Let's just read it as it stands and see if it's clear.
Can we...
I don't want to, I don't want to go down that road quite yet.
Okay, well, one is going to need discussion, if you want to discuss it after two, that's cool, but just realize that one still needs discussion.
Well, let's just keep going along, yeah. Yeah, we have to get to the bottom of this.
Okay, so, we're talking about threshold level disturbance, right? It has to meet the threshold level of disturbance. And the threshold level of disturbance very clearly talks about increase of greater than 100 square feet of impervious area. Okay, so we know we're talking already about an increase in impervious area. So, in the sense of extraneous phrases, the phrase that will increase the impervious area of the property I submit is extraneous because...
Yep.
Even if it's not there, clearly we have to, you know, have the 100 square feet in order to invoke this thing, so we're not losing anything other than complication by getting rid of that clause.
Right. I thought of that earlier, I just didn't get it.
Okay, so...
I didn't get as far as...
Does that omit the clause after structure?
Yes.
In other words, that will increase the impervious area of the property?
Yes. And so it's not changing the meaning, it's just simplifying it, and it's leaving the levels of disturbance to define the fact that we're talking about 100 square feet are greater than 100 square feet of increase in impervious area. So, what do we have left here? I've got to admire the factoring, but let's see what we've got left. Okay, so, I would say that I'm good with one as written, and I guess my remaining objections are in two still, but we can talk about that when we get there. So, I'm good with one, so far, I believe. Development of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure, if it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in section 525215, and is not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit, and the main DEP stormwater permit...
I didn't want to leave that in the rundown.
Has more stringent requirements, so we're not going to add our relatively miniscule requirements on top of main DEP stormwater requirements.
Well, if it's a huge project and they have to get a DEP stormwater permit, then, yeah, we're out of the picture kind of anyway.
I guess I would raise the same point in two that you would raise, Paul, because, Jess, help us out here, if it doesn't meet the threshold of disturbance, would it actually trigger the applicant having to perform those EMTs?
In number two, it would, because it says whether or not.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It means you've got to do the... Yes, that's why I put it in blue.
Well, and that's kind of what I was saying. What you had said a couple of times last week was you want to copy the same phrase saying it has to meet thresholds, and here it's saying it doesn't, and then, like, what's the intent?
Because a deck might not create 100 square feet of impervious, that's why. It might, it might not.
But you still want to...
I still want performance standards that are in 5.25, 2.2, 4.3.
Which in and there, and they're invoked, whatever you want in this thing.
Yeah, but which in fact, you know, can make, turn a deck into an LID, so...
Let's just turn to that, I just want to get a level of comfort with that, to me. It makes sense, but I just want to see what we're opening up there. 4.3 is on page five.
13.
On the old February two.
Oh. We work with Paul's ideas back there, and it's on, yeah.
Yeah, these are just...
I think there's one mention in, in the detail of the 243 that talks about LID standards. So, for that reason, it really couldn't have been totally removed from this document and put elsewhere, it kind of belongs here, even though I really get the impression, as we're thrashing over this, that, you know, 43 is sort of like a sore thumb, you know?
It's a nice set of standards, it's like, it's a good set of common sense LID rules.
Yeah, but it does make mention of the LID standards, and that's the only, the only place in the Act and zoning ordinance at large that talks about the LID.
I know.
So, it belongs here.
Makes sense. I'm not so sure about that, but I think there's reference to LID manuals under levels of disturbance, Paul. If you look on page six in the February two, is that...
Yeah, when it, when they start talking about the management, like, the sky...
1511.
It does refer to the guidebook.
There's all kinds of citations there. Under incidental disturbance.
Yeah, under management of incidental disturbance, yeah. But see...
Right, but we're not, we're not there yet, I mean, we haven't invoked that in this instance. But absolutely, there's, there's all kinds of LID invocations in this document, I mean, that's kind of what it's for, but what I was saying was that the thing with it, about the decks and the, and the structure, and the incidental structures, there is a mention, I'm reasonably sure, I just got to find it, of something having to do with an L, of LID.
Oh, I think it was other, I think it was surface, impervious surfaces.
So, it wasn't actually in this...
Yeah, it said 5.25, well, it's after decks, it goes decks, patio, retaining wall, accessory structure, and impervious surfaces.
So, it's 14, falls, latest...
It's 5.25, yeah, here's on...
Yes, okay, right, impervious surfaces. Talking about the LID manual, and there's a citation, so it kind of belongs in here pretty much for that reason alone. I mean, I, I wouldn't think that it would be a bad thing to take 97% of this 243 section, stormwater management for decks, patios, retaining walls, and just slap it into the ordinance at large and not even have it part of this.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Other than the LID mention, that's all.
No, I don't know what you're talking about now.
Let's just nail down number two here first. I'm still confused as to whether we ought to... I understand the sense, Jess, that you bring to this, but I, I'm not sure whether the, if it meets the threshold of disturbance or not, is kind of biting our tail a bit there.
Why?
Because of the notion of the exclusion from having to abide by these standards if you are less than 100 square feet in disturbance.
If you're less than 100 square feet, you do not qualify as an incidental or non-incidental...
But we, but it's still...
Thing, so what are you going to tell people to do? They at least have to have standards.
Yeah.
At least there's performance standards of what the deck has to do if it's a small deck, or a small patio, or whatever.
Okay, when you say it like that, I guess I can, well, with you, because the trigger, the trigger would be, let me just...
It has to be at least 500 square feet of disturbance and 100 square feet of impervious added. And see what, if you design a patio that doesn't have any impervious, or, you know, that is its own LID...
Or if it's eight by 10.
Then you, then you're solving your problem before you even get complicated.
I'm with you. There's a thought. So, it's, it's a minimum threshold of standards that's implied on smaller projects, even if they do not trigger this 100 square feet, if they're eight by 10.
Yeah, I mean, if for some reason you want a 500 square foot patio, then...
It's a given.
Then you would have to go through the, you know, then it's a non- incidental or whatever, and it's, you know, blah de blah. But if it's smaller and it's separate from the structure, you know, it's a separate...
Okay, I'm with you.
It just, just makes sure everybody gets to, you know, to do an LID where or another.
What's their sense of, focus here, on that one?
Well, I'd want to say, don't get too happy. We've got a few things to run through.
I don't think this is a bad area of minimal, or, it doesn't sound that, if you read it, it's not...
Well, and I don't think there's even a question about whether it invokes or not, I'm more talking about just logically, what are the combinations of things that could happen, and are they going to be as the planning board intends? So, I'd like to kind of walk through some...
You have one here, okay? One tonight on this.
One what?
One hypothetical.
One hypothetical, sorry, it's going to take...
Make it your best three.
Give it your best shot, please. Well, then I guess we'll have two more weeks of discussion on this.
This is still, we're still on two.
Well, don't invent things that don't get built, okay? Let's, let's at least keep it to a realistic project.
Well, you can tell me why it's realistic.
Let's start with number one, see if we don't wake from new...
Okay. Well, first of all, when two is invoked, and I don't think I ever got two answers that were the same thing, so I'm going to ask it like the, for the sixth time. What would you prefer rather than invoked? I'm perfectly happy to phrase it any way.
I don't really care, I just, you know...
Please, move, move on.
I think invoking is kind of magic.
How about triggered?
Yeah, sure, whatever, I'm...
We want to...
It's also definitely written in the document, I have a file here.
Let's move forward, okay. When two does something, how's that? Okay? We are clear that that something includes doing section 43.
I think we're pretty clear on that.
I got no argument about that at all.
Right.
Okay? But what part of what's below this, between here, you know, above 243... But what part of what's below this, between here, you know, above 243, all the rest of this ordinance, and by the ordinance, I'm talking about this new thing that's going in stormwater ordinance, what rest of this new section is going to be done if one does not apply and two does apply? How much of this other stuff are we going to do?
I don't know what the other stuff you're referring to is.
I think I can answer that, because it holds up the standard of threshold of disturbance, it leads the reader into saying, okay...
That makes it worse, yes.
I have to run, well...
I have to read down here and do things now to even look at this phrase or evaluate this phrase that doesn't mean... You don't if you remove the phrase, removes the, you know, disturbance. So you're, I guess, if the phrase had not been added about whether or not threshold of disturbance, I think if it had not been added, the situation would not be quite as confusing as I think it is now, but that doesn't mean it was unconfusing before.
But you didn't like it before, you didn't like it no matter what.
Right, right, but it didn't have anything...
You didn't like it no matter what permutation or non-mutation anyone has come up with.
Great. Tell me what it's supposed to do.
Well, we're getting close.
Two.
Let me, if I may, address one.
Please.
Before we get any more...
Yep.
We did have the, my suggestion of merely invoking the same phrase that we used in one, if it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in section 525-215.
But what if it doesn't meet the threshold? Do they get to do whatever they want?
That's why I agree with the sensibility of what you've drafted here. So I think that addresses that issue and gives some rigor to even small projects, which I have no problem with. But I think by using the clause threshold of disturbance, you've told the applicant, I have to further refine the nature of what I'm doing here in terms of these criterion that are discussed below.
Yes. And that's bad.
Why is that?
Well, first of all, because it says regardless of your answer, never mind, never mind the threshold of disturbance.
It doesn't say never mind, it says refer to 4.3. Those are the standards, those are performance standards of the structures you're going to be making.
It says whether it meets the threshold or not. So it's asking them to go down, basically, unless they've already evaluated, oh, I don't even need to do that because it doesn't matter what my answer is.
I don't, no.
It's just asking them to read 215, right?
Right, so it's actually going to go down here and do this, absolutely, okay? So let's look at this, actually, I think it's clearer, my quibble, I think, is clearer in this, with this new proposal here. So if we have this applicability session, we say, this ordinance shall apply to all new development within the following zones. And all, I'm going to assume here means all, includes decks, includes buildings, includes not buildings, okay? Then we come down and we say, develop, okay, number one possibility is development of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure, if it meets the threshold level of disturbance and is not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit.
So why did you delete the clause as delineated in section 525-215?
I didn't delete it.
It's not deleted.
I thought I said it.
No, no.
Okay, then I should have. It's underlined, it's not crossed out.
Are you reading for the justice copy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
If it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in section 525-215 and is not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit.
Yep.
Okay. So we know that if one is true, it sort of dovetails into saying this ordinance shall apply to all new development within the following zones, right? So we know that that is in reference to that. If one is true, then this ordinance shall apply. Is that a reasonable statement? Yes?
I'm not sure what the hell you're saying.
Okay. Talk of applicability, we're making a broad statement, talking about the zones, and then the two paragraphs following it are further clarification of what is intended, right? Is that a reasonable statement?
Due to the nature of the project.
Okay. So possibility one is that we have a new structure, an expansion of existing structure, we're talking about threshold level of disturbance and not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit. If those are true, if ultimately that sentence is true, then this ordinance shall apply. Is that a true statement? Yes?
I guess you're...
I'm taking these one thing at a time.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Why not?
Okay?
Happy days.
Well, I'm in two. I think we're getting there, maybe. Okay, number two is the second possibility.
Yeah.
Okay? So newer expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces, not part of the development of a new structure or building expansion of an existing structure, and, you know, whether or not it meets the threshold of disturbance, shall meet requirements in section 525-43, but not stated but also implied is this ordinance shall apply to that as well. We got one and two, both of which refer to one.
Wait, when you say this ordinance, what are you...
This ordinance, the whole stormwater ordinance.
Well, of course it would. Why wouldn't it?
Well, now we're talking about all this other stuff.
It's new development, right? It's all new development?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a category of all new development, so therefore it's all, the ordinance applies to all of it.
In those three zones.
Okay, so if it meets the threshold of disturbance, are we going to do this stuff in here that's talking about threshold level of disturbance?
Yes.
Is that going to be required?
If it...
The two different levels of disturbance?
If it meets the level of disturbance, it's going to qualify as, yes.
For the BMEs, as described as that.
And if it does not meet the threshold of disturbance, what's going to happen?
They have to do...
If they're in the middle of, they're going to have to do the 4.3, yeah, they're still going to have to have performance standards applied to the structure that they do build.
All right, and is it going to, are both of these two things going to be separately considered?
There will be...
In that, actually, if I have a project that includes both...
Sequentially, separately, whether you do it all at once, I...
Well, if I have, if I have impervious areas that apply...
Are you asking if it's two different permits? They're not two different permits.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I'm saying are, and that's kind of why last week I tried to put it all in one clause.
Wait, what is that? Please.
Go ahead. What's your hypothetical situation that would delineate where you're getting at?
Say, okay, so when I'm looking at these levels of disturbance, it's talking about square feet and talking about impervious area. So say I have square feet of disturbed ground and square feet of impervious area that apply to my structure, new structure or existing structure, and I also have a different set of those things that apply to my deck, patio, retaining walls, and accessory structures. I have two separate clauses that are separately considered. Do I have those two separate sets of things being considered and applied to these disturbance guidelines in these two clauses? And I understand that I could be construed to be overcomplicating it, but it doesn't not mean that.
Okay, so you're asking, you're asking if you're hitting two separate, if you have to cross the threshold twice.
Basically, yes. Do I have to consider them twice because I've got two separate sets of conditions? And might I hit both of them? Well, actually, I couldn't hit both of them because it talks about the other existing structure.
You're still, and that was a solid total. And you're still going to be working at zero runoff. So I'm not sure it really matters.
Okay, so...
The clause doesn't, Paul, doesn't the clause in two, not part of the development of a new structure or building expansion of an existing structure, that, I mean, that's what separates one from two. One is part of that, those circumstances, and two is not.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, this is where I had to...
Okay, I definitely agree with that. One moment. And then the other, another thing that was going to hit us was the DEP stormwater permit thing, but one moment, please.
DEP stormwater thing, I wish it didn't have to be there, but...
Expansion of existing structure, okay. So we do not, if we do have an expansion of exist, okay. So if we, let me rethink this up. Just about the point that I raised about two separate sets of considerations. Okay, so if this is talking about when one is being evaluated, it's the new structure and expansion of existing structure. When two is being evaluated, by definition, as written, you cannot have that, so you would not ever have two evaluations.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'll agree. All right.
I'm going to put a circle on my...
You do that, and actually, right, you check one else. Okay, so there's other issues here, though.
Moving on.
Okay, we're not exactly moving on, but we're moving on to the next one. Okay. Unless you want to stop talking about it, and we can talk about it next time.
No, I'm exhausted.
I actually think we're on a roll here, based on, so let's keep going.
It's more of a bouncer, roll.
Yeah, however.
Momentum's momentum.
Yes.
525, please.
All right, so say we're developing a new structure or expansion of an existing structure.
Times. What are you doing?
Let him finish his laptop, and then we'll get out of this.
I thought we were...
And it does not meet the threshold level of disturbance.
That is a hypothetical, which I don't think would happen.
You don't think it's ever, well, then why would he even ask whether it meets the threshold of disturbance? You're saying there's projects that are expansion of existing structure that would...
Well, I suppose...
A construction would not meet the threshold of disturbance.
A new structure that would be smaller than 10x10.
We had one last summer, it was on steep property, but it only added 49 feet of impervious. Remember that, the phosphoroal one? It was only adding 49.
But can I actually do stuff that doesn't have anything to do with external footprint, conceivably? And I still need a permit, and I'm still going to potentially be evaluated in this session.
If you're not changing your impervious, you're not going to need a stormwater permit.
Right, I don't...
Well, but I'm still coming through.
So you go through and you feel it, you're kind of like, I'm making this small, small structure, I don't know.
No, not necessarily.
Well, I don't know.
Well, say I, say I put a second floor on my house. And I'm not arguing I'm not changing impervious surface, right? I'm just raising the roof and I'm not doing anything with the footprint, but I'm going to need a permit. It's a project.
If it's not necessarily a stormwater, not necessarily...
Oh, agreed, agreed. And I'm going to come through and say shoreline zone, resource protection. Oh, I'm in shoreline zone. Here I am reading this, I don't know that I don't have to do it yet.
There's no harm in reading it.
Because I haven't read one yet. Yes?
I don't know what you're talking, no. What are you talking about? One comes before two, how can you miss it?
I'm saying that I'm coming through here and I'm about to hit one. Yes? On this project.
Yeah, yeah.
I've put a second floor on my house.
Okay.
I'm going through the zoning ordinance.
Putting a second floor on the house. You're not landscaping at all, you're not increasing your...
Well, I'm actually going to be, I'm actually going to be putting a second floor on the house, and I'm going to be putting a deck in the backyard.
There, so then we have to think about the deck.
And we'd have to run it through the...
And we'd decide whether the deck...
Okay, so one says...
...that it gained more than 100 square feet of impervious. And if it is, is the structure going to be...
Well, we'd have to find that out.
So you go, and you go to one, you want to put the second story on, and the deck, you go to one, and you say, oh, I'm expansion of an existing structure, and you read through the guidelines, you find out, oh, I'm not really creating it.
Well, one does not apply because it's a new structure, but it doesn't meet the threshold of disturbance.
Well, it's an or expansion of an existing structure.
So if you're not meeting the threshold of disturbance, you get a regular building permit like everyone else, you don't get the next, you don't worry about your stormwater.
But it doesn't meet the threshold of disturbance.
Right, well, if it does, then you don't need a permit for it.
Okay, let's keep reading. New or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, not part of the development of a new structure or a building expansion of an existing structure. So this is part of the development of a new structure or building expansion of an existing structure. So two doesn't apply either in this case.
Not if you're not putting a deck and patio or...
I'm putting a deck and patio.
Then it counts.
Well, not a patio, say I'm putting a deck.
If you're putting a deck on, and the deck is going to bring you to an impervious, an addition of impervious surface of over 100 square feet...
Say it's not.
If it's not, then it's not. Then all it has to do is live up to the nice little performance standards that are listed in 4.3.
But it doesn't, because it's, because it's part of the development of a new stra, excuse me.
It's not going to be part of a new development of a new structure.
But I'm doing it at the same time.
But it's a deck, are you putting it on your roof?
No.
Well, you're just purposely not...
I'm trying to make sure that this stuff is not going to leave open-ended possibilities. Okay?
You're just being maludrid.
Well, the second story, I think, you've got that covered, I think.
I don't really, I'm not trying to accuse you, it's just...
I think if we're adding a second story to the house, it would be, with one, is expansion of an existing structure, and then you'd block in, you'd see, oh, I'm not really applying for stormwater because I'm not increasing...
Okay, but it's less than the threshold of disturbance.
Yeah.
Well, actually, two doesn't even care whether it's a threshold of disturbance or not. But I guess the point is that the project is part of the development of a new structure or building expansion. And I agree that it's not necessarily on the roof that I'm putting this small deck, but these are two separately considered sections, and...
And if neither of them are non- incidental or incidental disturbances, then you don't need a stormwater permit.
But two, it doesn't matter. Right?
If you're doing an item listed under two as part of one, we're not, we don't, we don't have to parse out, we don't have to building, I mean, that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
You're building a house, and you're having a patio on the house, and you're structured, then we're not concerned about how you're going to specifically treat the deck there, because we know through the process that the whole application, the whole, the whole project will be treated with LID consideration, so to speak. Every part of it will be.
So...
Because it's...
I mean, there might be a house, there might be a garage, maybe retaining walls.
The scenario that I came up with is the, basically saying that none of this stuff will apply in that scenario, because two won't apply because it is part of the development, the project is part of the development of a new structure. One specifically excludes, apparently, the newer expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, et cetera. And that's kind of where I'm getting at.
Well, where's the new structure? Where's the new structure?
I think you're considering...
You're not, you're expanding a structure.
I'm expanding a structure, and the same project, I'm adding a patio.
Right.
So there's two separate clauses to evaluate.
Impervious area over 100 square feet.
I'm not.
Then, then you're not. It's as simple as that. If you're not, you're not.
Right, and therefore, we're never going to...
If it doesn't meet the thresholds, then you don't have to get a stormwater permit for it.
I'm not saying you need a stormwater permit.
What we're seeing is that by saying...
I'm saying that we'll never get to 4.3 in that instance. Okay, if you look at suggestion two, the last page of the thing that I...
It says if you're building a patio, whether it makes the level of disturbance in one or not, that you at least have to follow these performance standards. They're pretty rigorous, I mean, they're pretty good performance standards.
But it's only going to do that if it's not part of the development of a new structure or building expansion, and we didn't do one in this scenario.
And that's okay.
Okay, so as long as you are good with not doing 4.3 for my deck under certain circumstances...
I think you'd start to do that because when they do the whole big project site, they're looking at it, they try to apply the LIDs to every aspect.
To the whole thing, to the thing as a whole, and not kind of that.
As a unit.
Okay, so...
So I think the deck, if you say, oh, you're going to put the deck in the architect, you know, blah, blah, then you should do this in a little reading argument.
If I may, Paul, I think the answer to that question that you raised is in the February 2, it's in all of the provisions, February 212, under management of incidental disturbances and management of non- incidental disturbances.
And what page?
Six.
Yep.
So you basically have to run the whole project through the LID development plan, and as pieces of it are considered, the LID sensibility is brought to bear on that part of the plan. And as pieces of it are considered, the, the LID sensibility is brought to bear on that part of the plan.
Okay, so that's the intention. Okay, so is there any reason not to combine one and two into a single section?
Yes, for clarity.
Okay. For clarity.
Actually, I'm, I'm indifferent whether it's combined or not.
Well, one is mostly from new... Oh, sorry.
But I'm not sure now, in construction, how do they consider it? That's what I don't know, maybe decks and patios are always considered separate and not part of the...
No.
Of the structure, they're not part of the...
Well, the, the way this is talking, there's, there's...
When you give a develop, a, a building plan to Kenny Paul, he says, okay, you've got, you've got a porch, and you've got a, you've got, you know, a screen porch. You've got an open deck, and, and you've got the main domicile, the main residence, and you've got a garage. Each of those will be considered, uh, respective to its, you know, its own, uh, situation or whatever, within, uh, one. If it is part of the development of a new structure.
And we add to the agenda another sixty-five dollars?
Under those, under those...
For, for, again, clarity, if we take the phrases that are in two and leave them there, but also add them to one, cause I think that's what you're thinking, but I'm not reading this.
Yeah, no, that would be doable for me.
So if we say, for instance, um, like, okay, so look at number two. Look at my, look at the last page on, on my suggestion, number two, okay? So where it says, this one shall apply, blah, 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 okay? So we strip out where we have the applicability, okay? Have that up top. One would say basically what this says, cause you will see that I've added the expansion of decks, blah, 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 in here. So we add that to one. So basically, we're saying the decks, patios, retaining walls, all of that stuff, in addition to structures, all of these things are what we're talking about is one project. Now it's clear it's one project. Threshold of disturbance, does what it does. And then if that's not true, and we come to two, and we say, okay, well, a sub-part of what we were talking about in one, we're not gonna consider threshold of disturbance, we just wanna make sure, agree with that.
I'm fine with that.
That, to me, is sufficiently clear.
As long as it's a sentence that, you know, is not too long.
Well, yeah.
But, yeah, I agree.
And, and what I can do is mock that up for next time around. Um, I think it, it will at least make sense, cause what I've been talking about, when I've been looking at one, to me, that does not include all of what the two is talking about.
Yeah, no, there's always that question, does one mean the patio, or does one...
That's what I've been thinking, and it appears that you've been thinking, oh, this is all part of one.
Kind of.
But... And, and, you know, it doesn't say whether it is or not, that's where you have the interpretation problems.
So what draft are you looking at?
Well, I've been sort of combining like four different things here, but, so... If we go, okay, let's, let's go to the... I'm trying to read this through, um, I'm gonna use Jess's copy and just sort of go, uh, edit as I go here. This, this one shall apply to all new development within the following zones, three zones. One, development of a, okay, no, no, no. Uh, development of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure, or new or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces, if it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in section five twenty-five, two-on-five, and is not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit, that would be one. Two would essentially read the way it reads now. Although I might argue that the thing about disturbance is asking them to read down, to talk, to look at disturbance stuff.
Right.
Unless you say something like...
Well, see, I tried to make it closer, that's why I put the level of disturbance there.
Unless you say, shall meet requirements in section five twenty-five, two-four-three, and how would we phrase something like, um, and, uh, does not apply to anything, any obligations regarding disturbance?
Don't add stuff like that. We're not writing what it doesn't apply to.
Okay.
We're not writing about its non-applicability, we're writing about its...
Okay, and, one could look at, go down through and talk about management of incidents on non- incidental disturbances. We know it does not meet the threshold, so theoretically, we're kinda good. We kinda have to plop down through this thing and see that, oh yeah, this is talking about disturbances again. We, it did not apply to this two, cause two hit and one didn't. We know, we just need to do that. Um, that, I'd say that's sufficiently clear to eliminate legal discussion. I think. So...
Sounds good.
To your, to your suggestion, we would then add, so essentially, we talked about decks, patios, retaining walls twice.
Yeah.
We're gonna make it part of that first project. If it isn't part of that first project, then we'll freshly consider two. And then, if it hits that, then we're gonna make sure we do that section. And we're gonna be doing that section anyway, if it's invoked in one. So that's my problem.
Can you redraft that then, for...
Yes.
We haven't set a date, but I, myself, I think it's, it's clear, as Jess has laid it out, and I think meshing those two sentences together does, does not help clarity.
Well, at least you don't have to question whether one includes patios or not, you know? Cause it does leave a question mark there, it sort of implies that it does, but it doesn't really say it does.
Well, especially that, that talking about all, originally the word all was in one, and now it's none.
Yeah, well, that's a reason.
Well, I, I'm not saying that it needs to be out of back again, but what I'm saying is, you know, before, all at least had a better chance of including all of this stuff, even though it didn't specifically mention it, but now it's removed specifically.
Yeah, but it says, it says right up front, this ordinance shall apply to all new...
Right, but then, we're looking for clarification below, and this top one talks about the structures, and then the bottom stuff talks about the decks, and they have separate standards. So as long as we know that the stuff that's mentioned in two is also included in one, then I would say, I don't have a whole lot to throw stones at anymore.
Okay.
And as long as we sort of understand what it's all gonna do.
Stop throwing stones.
Yeah.
I'm all for that.
Okay.
No, I agree, I, I, I don't like, you know, it kinda, it's gonna...
Yeah, I mean, nice to see the verb, see the...
Okay.
Cause I still think the clause in two, the second line clause in two, not part of the development of a new structure or building expansion.
Yeah, I hate that one, too, but I don't want to do it back, but it's the same.
It's fine, it's what delineates one from two.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no, nothing wrong with it at all.
Yeah, but the stuff, the way it's written, one does not include the stuff in two.
Yeah, I see, it delineates one...
And she thinks it does, and that's where we're making this...
Everybody thinks it does, there's no argument.
Well, I'm not really, I'm not seeing that.
So like, by adding all those extra words, you can go either way, you can reverse it back.
All right, let's see it, it's gonna be nailed down the next time.
I mean, part, we'll call this an advantage, to have somebody in off the street that doesn't work with this stuff all the time, trying to interpret what this is, you know, what this means.
Yeah, but most people tell photos, I mean, the construction guy usually does the ordinance stuff, not the homeowner. I mean, that's just a known, and...
Well, the way, the way we've got this set up, though, the homeowner should be able to handle the incident.
They should be able to understand it if they read it, but the likelihood of them being the one to read it...
Yeah.
Well, there is a certain point at which, you know, you can just get tied up in semantic knots, so whatever.
Okay. Um, does the chair want to discuss any other parts of this, this evening?
Uh, just, just, uh, two-on-five, which I thought we had a, a, uh...
Levels of disturbance, you mean?
Yeah, and I thought we had a revision of that last time.
Um, yeah, this is it, it's just moved up. I think the only thing was, did you swap exclusions and levels of disturbance, is that what, what it was?
I wanted to put the word occurs in there instead of means, but...
Yeah, no, we, I had a, I had a take on that, but...
Right, I think, yeah, but your, I think your quibble was the any space-time as opposed to any time.
No, me, no, disturbance of land is the exposure of, is the way I would phrase that. Well, instead of, you guys...
Oh, you mean that the definitions are...
Figure out what you're gonna do. No, under, under levels of disturbance, the, the thing I had on the table last...
It is not like a definition at the beginning of the section. But, but the way, the word is...
If you take out all the means, and replace it with occurs.
No, say, hear me out for a minute. The, the, the verbage of means any time, it's just, it breaks my ass, excuse me. Um, if it's read, the, a disturbance of land is the exposure of soil, sand, gravel.
Yeah, okay, take out any time, I guess...
So then you have to read...
By human activities, by human activities. You just move exposure up, yeah.
Why don't you just change any time into when?
Means when.
The terms of land occur when soil...
Occurs when, how's that?
Occurs...
What, what's wrong with...
When sand, gravel...
Well, when you, when you put exposed at the front, now you've, now you're gonna be screwing up the rest of it, where it talks about exposed by human activities such as, cause you don't wanna use the word exposed twice.
You just cross up are exposed, as it comes secondly, so or rocks, by human activities such as...
Yeah.
But it still works, it still works, you just move it up and...
See, are exposed was struck out in my, my proposal.
Okay, so what's the, what's the phrase after land?
A disturbance of land is the exposure of soil, sand, gravel, or rocks by human activities such as clearing trees.
Oh yeah, we did agree to that one, I agree with that.
The exposure of.
Yeah. I agree.
Means, occurs, any time, okay, so...
Now, now I'm remembering it.
Exposure of, sounds one, or rocks, by human activities, and then the rest of it's the same? Yes?
Yes. So you're just striking out some things, yeah?
Okay, we're good. Um, now, Jess, had you swapped, um, the levels of disturbance and the, the exclusions, or did I just imagine that?
Yes, I swapped them. And I intentionally left the management part, and so half is exclusion, sorry. Which I don't know if that's good or bad, I just like, it was at the end, I hadn't...
Yeah, I kinda like the management right with the incidental.
I, I, although, I'm on board with that, definitely, because it brings, and that's kinda what I was going, going for when I wanted to move them above the applicability, because you would already have defined the, the levels of disturbance. But at the very least, it keeps all of this stuff right up front, and then only after you think you're gonna be doing something, do you need to read about exclusions?
Yeah, and, and then...
The, the proposal is applicability followed by exclusions, followed by levels of disturbance. Can we vote on that, please?
That's not what we were just talking about.
No, applicability...
Followed by levels of disturbance.
Looking at Jess's thing, so it's the applicability, the levels of disturbance, they go together, cause we're defining levels of disturbance for applicability. Then, exclusions, which may save you some reading, you know? So you only have to read that if you know you're gonna come in here in the first place. And then, if you're not excluding, then you go with the management of the incidental and non- incidental disturbances. And I think that makes a lot of sense.
No, it does not. The, the...
It's seven, it's eight fifteen.
As, as Jen Jesperson laid it out, um, uh, exclusions are predicated upon applicability, or based upon applicability. So the, the following of exclusions, uh, after applicability makes, makes complete sense.
Right.
Except that, why read about the exclusions before you even know what's included?
Applicability isn't even complete yet, until you evaluate the levels of disturbance, and that's where she was coming from. Just basically taking the, the definitions of the levels of disturbance, and slapping them above, with applicability, cause it kinda goes there. So you're really moving those two sections, the, the definitions of the two levels of disturbance, up below applicability, and then exclusions. And then, you're talking about handling of the disturbances, that you now know what they are, and you now know that we're not excluded. So, basically, we're not asking anybody to read stuff that doesn't apply. Because, you know, at some point, you hop out of here, and then you're...
And you've got the reader bouncing back and forth between, um, on either side of what's excluded, in terms of management of incidental disturbances and, and what is an...
But why read about management if you don't know what you're doing yet? I mean, I agree that management should come after.
Oh, yeah, it's still coming after.
But, uh, just getting the definitions up there, so that we know what that threshold is, and hopefully it'll be written, the layout will be so that they're on the same page.
Tom, um, the, the, where it talks about the incidental disturbance and the non- incidental disturbance, right now, those are one section. So the incidental, it defines it, and then it goes to talk about management, okay? And then the non- incidental, it defines it, and then it goes to talk about management. Well, what she did here is took the front part of each one of these things, the defi- the definition of it, moved it up, because it really applies to where you're talking about it, up there, where, when we're talking about applicability. And then also below that, took the definition of the non- incidental and moved it up. But the management stuff stays where it is. We don't talk about management until we know that we're applicable, that we haven't been excluded. Now we're talking about management. And from a, from a logical flow, at least to me, that seems to make more sense than what it's doing. Cause right now, it's referring to stuff further down in the document. That, that is, you know, the other side of my exclusion.
All I can suggest is that we review, uh, try to get your arms around the sensibility of what Jen Jesperson, what, why she sequenced this original document where she did. And I think it's because one piece, uh, I think, anyway, as I read through it, um, our, the, the, her thinking it was in sequence, and one thing predicates the next thing that follows, but...
So we were having problems understanding that, weren't we?
I don't necessarily think there's an issue in, with that, per se, but it makes sense to have proximity of that clause here, cause I mean, once you've read it, you know, you know what it says, you don't have to go reading it again when you're going down through the document. It, but it does seem to make sense.
I, I would still...
I wasn't enamored with it, but I liked it better than...
I would still, I would still suggest that Jesperson document that puts exclusions immediately after applicability is a, is a more rational...
But I don't, well, it does. It's doing, it's doing that, but I can't evaluate applicability.
You think about what you don't have to do, before you're, before you've come, before you've figured out what you do have to do.
It, because you don't have, if you consider exclusions, and you, you find you fall within that, you don't have to go further.
But you still need to know what the definition of an incidental and non- incidental is.
No, even not.
You do, because, because the first paragraph says if it meets the threshold level of disturbance.
But, yeah, so you are talking about having to go through applicability before you go to exclusions, right?
You've gotta know those definitions.
Yes, applicability, I'm just saying Jen's, Jen's thinking of applicability, and then finding out what, what is excluded from that, is a, is a very customary sequencing of these kinds.
Right, but part of applicability is this, is this section which talks about the levels of disturbance.
Right, but you don't need, there's no need to go to levels of disturbance, which is a, a third hierarchy, so to speak, which you would naturally fall into consideration of if you, if you are not, um, uh, if your project is not removed from consideration by the exclusions. If, if after the exclusions, you find, oh, okay, I don't mean any of those, I have to keep reading on.
But I'm gonna read applicability first, correct?
Correct.
And, and we're gonna evaluate applicability first before exclusions, do you agree with that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, in order to evaluate applicability, do I not need to go down and find and read those definitions of levels of disturbance? Do I not need to do that?
You do, but you, there's no need, there's no need to go that far if you were to go to exclusions next, after applicability.
If you had exclusions first and then applicability, I would agree with that. But if you have applicability first, I need to evaluate that first.
Maybe we should put the exclusions before applicability.
I don't know, maybe we should.
That would be fine with me.
But if we do that, we also need to take, talk about probably the zones first.
Okay, zones, then what, does it lie?
It is. I think you're making it more complicated than it needs to be.
I was waiting for, for... Any other points we wanna look at for next week, or...
Should I rough up something, more or less according to what we talked about, and hopefully, when we see it in front of us, it'll be a little...
For applicability.
For, for any of the sections that we talked about, maybe, maybe a whole new draft.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
A whole new draft, so we can say, okay, here's our best...
Or just for that section, I mean, mostly.
Can we please give some consideration of the Jesperson original document?